Okay.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, it's five past seven. I will call the meeting to order. There's three members present.
Good grief.
It's a quorum. If anyone's recording this meeting, did they make it known? I don't know what we're gonna do about it.
I hear an echo in the room.
Yeah. Does that echo from you, Bob?
No, it's the microphone.
Should we whisper?
Go on ahead.
Yep. We need a couple of signatures on a form up that we did a couple of weeks ago.
I sign.
Actually, there's two signatures. That's a form C1 there. It has three. Yep, that's good. We've been waiting for that. Last signature for that.
Is that one page, Judge?
Yep, that's it. And that's good. I'll put that right in this. I'll give a low where to find it.
Ten point five feet. I know we reviewed this, but that's enough for several.
Do you have copies of the minutes of February twenty fourth, please?
Do we?
We just have the one copy.
One copy. We want the full to stay.
Oh, okay.
Think we have any?
All right, so. Take care of the bill from Charlie. And next thing up is the continued public hearing for thirty-one thirty-seven, thirty-one thirty-nine, Corrymbury Highway. Dollar General.
Entertain a motion adjourned?
We were supposed to do that before we opened the public. Charlie did not, I guess he just got the estimate for consulting today back in.
For the parking lot, the drainage and all that's reviewed.
The other thing was the, the sign. Did you ever?
Yes, sir. Boulder Luke sent it in to you guys. Hopefully you received that.
Updated plans here too. I believe Luke sent an email, a copy of the monument sign.
The planning board secretary is out on a medical leave, so.
They might have a copy here.
If it was just sent to us, we don't have.
They have it.
And what, what email did you send it to? The planner?
Yeah, I believe it was coordinated through the planner.
Gotta look that.
There we go.
These are updated plans too. Which we can run from quick here.
Yeah, yeah.
How's the weather down in Tennessee?
Wonderful. Eighty-four degrees when I left. I think it's summertime.
So when do you guys start cooking your moonshine on it? When do you guys start cooking your moonshine?
You know, there's a new place just opened up downtown. They're making moonshine down there and distributing it.
That's the same email to the planner.
It's like a little micro brewery.
Wow.
Bottling and everything right there in the same building.
Where's that?
Down in Nashville.
You don't bring any samples with you or what?
I did not. I did not. They won't let me get on the plane with those big bottles of whiskey. Basically, if you remember, there was a few issues that we had and we have revised the plans based on that. One of them was a fence was requested for the rear of the site. And per the new drawings that you just received, we have revised the drawings to show a, a fence started in the northwest corner of the site, ran all the way across to, I guess, the west side of the site, and then we've angled it down on the, that point end of the property on the south side. There's also a piece from the, the neighbor has an existing fence running across his property line on the west side. He says it stopped short of coming up to the property line. I believe there was about fifty feet there. Asked if we would put a four-foot tall wood privacy fence extending heads up to the, the corner, and we've done that. It shows up on the drawing. One of the other issues were the arrows, the in-and-out arrows for the drives. We adjusted those to show straight in, straight out instead of the Y-type arrow. Tell them that they can turn either way. Discourage that a little bit. And then the last item was the monument sign. We have moved that back away from the, the property line. Moved it back. I believe we moved it about five feet.
Yeah, about nine feet off the property line.
So that the people exiting will have a clear view.
Yes, that's gonna be the detail.
And obviously, the, the handout that you have with the monument sign, that's the standard for a physical monument, the five by ten. In order to meet your twenty-four square foot, we bumped that down to a three by eight. So those were the, the main items that I can recall, if you guys. Another one that I've missed. We did go through at the last meeting the five waivers that we were requesting. And I believe that there was no issue unless I misunderstood. Landscape berm, we asked for a waiver from that running across the north side of the property. Basically, just the, the berm in conjunction with the landscaping that we're putting in the front, we would get it up. It would be high to the point where it would block sightlines as you're leaving the site. So we requested relief from that. My understanding was there wasn't an issue with that part of it. Curb along that front drive. Basically, it's just a drive. There's no parking on that side. And the way that I understood it was the, the intent for the curbing is to try to prevent cars from rolling into the, into the landscaped areas. We do have wheel stops at all the parking spaces that aren't nosed into the building and at the end of the drive on the northwest side of that drive. So hopefully, we can contain all the cars within the paved area and nobody will be driving over any landscape. The third one was the landscape island relief. The ordinance says that if you have a run that's fifteen spaces or more, we need to have a landscape island in it. We have one run that is fifteen cars, which is the one that noses into the front of the building. We asked for relief at that point just because of the small, the, the narrowness of the lot and the way it's configured. There was also a request from the fire chief that we not put the islands in that area to impede any emergency vehicles coming into the site if there ever happens to be a fire there. The fourth waiver request was, your ordinance states that twenty-five cars or more would require interior landscape islands. We've got thirty-one spaces. Basically goes back, it's the same argument, I guess, for all of these, these waivers regarding the, the interior landscape islands. We've got thirty-one parking spaces. And with the configuration of the, the parking lot and the narrowness of the site, it, it's detrimental to put the landscape islands in place, and we ask for relief for the same reason. And the last one was each tree needs to be fifteen foot diameter, twenty foot, or twenty percent of the paved area needs to be shaded per the, the ordinance. We have tried to get as much shading on the parking as we can with the perimeter landscaping. That did not seem to be an issue to anyone either last week. So those are the five waivers. There was, obviously, our, our neighbor to the northwest of us came in and spoke regarding the screening between our property and his. And that was the result of the, the extension of his fence on the, the north side of that west property line. So with the modifications, I believe, hopefully, that we are to the point where we've got everything covered for you.
The fence, if that should be on your property or one way or the other, would you have any problem with relocating it? And I did notice that, like, the first three sections from, coming from the back lot line of the neighbor's fence was kind of uneven. I don't know if that's the section he fixed or.
If there is any damage to that existing fence, we'll certainly correct that whenever we put up the rest of this fence. See if I've got, I've got a survey here. It does appear like his fence is, is on our property back there on that back side. I don't have any problem with that. It really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to tear down a fence. It's just been put up and put up another one six inches further over. So, no, I have no issue with that at all. We'll, we'll leave it there. Extend it out the front on that northwest corner and repair any pieces of it. I know he did mention it was.
I noticed that front section is chain-linked now, so he just wants something a little more.
Yes, and what, what the plan was is to remove the chain link and then replace it with a four-foot tall wood privacy fence and diet into his six-foot tall fence that's, that's further away from the property line.
Lot ten twenty-five C, the little strip that runs through between the two lodge lots. Does anyone have rights to that access or is that just a?
My understanding is we don't have any title issues with this property. Austin, do you know about that strip? It's right here. It's right there through the center.
No, I don't believe that. I think pedal, pedal came back on that. No encumbrances?
Yes, everything came back clean. We haven't seen anything on the legal side of it. And I think, don't we have to re-plat this? One of the requirements here.
Consolidation, right?
Yes, the consolidation plat. So we'll make the entire piece of property one piece as soon as we purchase it. And that's a ten-foot strip. I'm not sure what they used it for.
It may have been accessed from the rail lines because there was another rail line this way.
Directly behind us?
Well, there's one behind it, and there was also one that cut across the front of it.
Oh, okay.
Between the two restaurants on the other side of the street that is angled.
That may be what that is. But basically, it's just split up into a couple of different lots. It looks like three. And we're, we're gonna consolidate all of them into one. Any other questions?
I have, I have two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
I think when we last met, and I don't know the, the exact regulation, but I think that it required that you have fourteen trees, and I think you had proposed ten. And I think that the other fellow that was here with you last time said that he would revise the drawings to show the additional trees in that open space area. I see they're not there right now, so.
Oh, we were talking about moving those, weren't we?
You were, well, he was gonna add some because I think, I think the client was saying he needed fourteen or so.
It's fourteen, is it? There, mate. Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Oh, these are, these are trees. They're just different species, so it's like, yeah. And then my other question is, could you, I don't remember that conversation where you were gonna cut the back section off. I thought the fence was gonna run the entire length, but I just have a question as to why that's being done that way.
It's just closer to the development, so we, we try to keep everything within, as, as close to the building and the project that we've got. If there's extra land out there that we're not gonna use or it's just basically dead space, it seems to make more sense to, to screen the development than screening a field. If you want it to run the, the rest of the way, it's not an issue.
I'm just wondering what, how would Dollar General handle the maintenance of that other property? And would that get pretty scraggly and trash-filled and, and then?
Can they have access to the fence if, you know, if they're gonna do a physical maintenance to the lawn? They'll be able to get to that.
My concern is, I think, once the Dollar General folks were in there, they're gonna look at it and go, oh, we just gotta do up to the fence.
That's not our piece.
And then on the other side of the fence gets pretty overgrown and full of debris and.
We can move that fence.
It's a concern, just for me.
Sure.
Do you wanna run the fence along, along the back?
It's up to, I think, the board members, but I just.
If they request it, we'll just take that one out. Just straighten it out and run it all the way to that east property line.
Yeah, because I think I did mention that, you know, that, that grass would get maintained or, you know.
And typically, the way that they do that is they, they just put out bid requests for local landscapers to maintain the yard, and they just award the contract, and it's a yearly basis. So the, the landscape companies will come in and trim and cut grass on a yearly basis. If that, and, you know, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but that may, may become a problem if we cut that piece off. And it's really, I don't know, it may be another thirty feet of fence. Once you straighten it out, from what we've got shown there now, it's not a big issue. We can do that.
Like I said, I was just concerned that it would just get overgrown, and the Dollar General folks wouldn't really pay attention to it.
Have you had a conversation with the neighbor about straightening up that crazy lot line?
Which crazy lot line?
It would be the, what, I still leave the one we're just talking about. I keep looking at that compass rose and thinking up is north, and it's not.
Yeah, so you're talking about?
The lot line for this property passes like twenty feet off of the rear corner of the neighbor's building.
This piece?
Yeah. And he cuts way over in front of.
So he does all this, that's all it is? Having that conversation, you're talking about him purchasing that from him?
Or, or straightening it out, so you, so you're not going behind his building and he's not going in front of yours, you know?
We can have that conversation. We're obviously not using any of this space, so if we can get rid of it, it's okay with us. And that, that happens quite a bit, actually. Whenever we can't split a piece of property up and the seller makes us buy the entire thing and we don't need it, we typically move it back to the city, park in, or even to one of the adjacent property owners or something, just to get rid of it. It's actually more economical for us to give it away than it is to maintain it for the next thirty years.
And I'm not speaking like that would be some sort of a condition.
We actually haven't had the conversation.
I know when they staked out that lot, it was surprising how close that. That's right out the back door of some of those businesses.
It is an interesting check.
I'm surprised it says there's twenty, twenty-one feet. Does it look like you could barely get a vehicle back there?
Yeah, the, the corner of the building is twenty-one point seven feet from.
You know, they staked it even further than that. I wonder who owns ten sixty-seven, which I think is the old railway right away. That must be what they staked, because that's a heck of a lot closer to the building than what you're showing your lot line at.
Oh, that, that gravel.
That twelve feet.
Oh, I see it, I see it, yes, sir.
Twelve-foot strip that runs through there.
I don't know what that is. Probably the same thing as that other ten-foot strip back there, and that was on our property.
Could I confirm one more time? Dollar General has only one design for their building?
Yes, sir.
It is, that's it.
Correct.
Plain as.
They actually have two, they have two size buildings that they use. One of them is a ninety-one hundred square feet and one of them is a ten thousand five hundred square foot.
Yeah.
And this one, I think we're doing a ninety-one.
Yeah, the one thirty by seventy, yeah.
Yes, yes.
But the look is the look.
The look is the look, yes, sir.
Never to change.
Well, the only time that it changes is whenever there are written ordinances in place in towns that require us to brick the entire building or change the facade in some fashion. Normally, the way this process works is whenever we come in and find a site that looks suitable for us, we'll investigate all the local ordinances and we budget everything that's written in those ordinances. So once we get that budget together and we send it over to Dollar General, they approve it, we're locked in on that amount of money. So once we go to planning boards or board of supervisors and somebody requests us to upgrade the building, but it's not a written ordinance, that money comes out of my pocket. So it's really hard for us to justify building a building where we're having to pay somebody to do it, where it's actually costing us money instead of us making money on it.
We thank you for your support.
That's right. There has, there has been quite a few instances where that was, that was the flavor of the meetings and the, the towns persisted in pushing that. And I can't go back to Dollar General and ask for more money after we've submitted that, that, that budget based on what the local ordinances are. So we just have to go away. You know, we just go to a different town and find a, find another site. We try to do everything we can. If it's, if it is an ordinance and it's a requirement, we budget that in. Dollar General can justify the rent that they have to pay for the cost that we have to pay for construction. The project goes forward. If the construction costs outweigh the, the rent that they feel that they can get out of these stores, the profit that they're making, they turn the projects down and we go to look somewhere else. But yes, that is the prototypical building. That is what we, they prefer to build everywhere. And really, the building doesn't change any. If there are requirements for upgrades, we just start adding stuff to that building. It's the same building, basically. You just put brick on it or you put a different parapet on it or, you know, whatever.
It is horrifically homely.
It.
Just so.
It's a box.
Yeah.
It is a box, yes.
It's functional.
It is very functional.
Yep.
And you know, I can't, I can't tell you that, that it, the building hasn't been upgraded in other places. And because it has, and we have certainly done that in other places.
It would just be nice to see the front a little nicer. I mean, it doesn't add any value.
In what regard? Nicer?
Just, just in appearance, I mean.
I mean, well, the front of it's split-faced block right now. What, what would you consider to be nicer than that?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not a designer, but I'm just saying it is, it doesn't add any real value to the community that you build in that blocks in. You know, I hope Dollar General makes a lot of money, and I, I'm sure they must, but.
Yes, sir.
They're not helping their communities by putting up the most simple, homely buildings they can find.
Understood.
So.
Understood.
Would it be, out of the question, to kick that, the front, the top where your signage is in your steel parapet? Could that come out, like, overhang the sidewalk or? Angle the, look a little, have a little more character to it?
There is a vestibule that is required here to meet the energy code. And there is a small overhang. It's not what you're after, I'm sure. Small overhang at the, the entrance to the building.
Okay, the, I think, I think the picture you showed didn't show that. It showed it just flat across the front earlier.
And there's a, there's a vestibule that goes in there as well, according to weather, you've got airlock.
Yep.
That's, it ain't much, but it does overhang.
Oh, you said, you said it bad.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's why it didn't show.
And with the, this is the prototype that we built down south. As you can see, the bump out right there, that's the vestibule. It goes on the front of this, so it will stick out a little bit. There'll be a, I believe it's five foot from this glass to the outside glass of the, that vestibule. So there is a bump there, but I'm sure it's not.
It's not quite as stark as the picture.
This is the one we build down south. This is their prototype. Whenever we come up in the, in these warmer climates, we have to put the vestibules in so they don't meet the energy code. National Energy Code. In order to do that, that's the configuration you see there.
No, they'll give it a little, a little character anyway.
A little bit of relief on the front.
And it looks a lot better than what we're seeing.
Absolutely. I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yep.
Well, you've seen the property before, uh, demolition?
Before they tore it down, no. I have this beautiful. But I've seen pictures. I've got, I've got lots of photographs of it. Whenever we started this process.
A lot of character.
Yeah, there was definitely character there then. I believe that it was still in place whenever our guys.
At least for thirty-five years. The place was pretty bad.
No, it was down.
Yeah, it was ugly.
Yeah, it's just, it's just an empty lot like.
Mr. Chairman, how do we handle the peer review by, and I just wanted to say this. We're a, a planning board that, we don't have, have a town planner at this particular time.
Okay.
So we ask, there's a group of engineers that the chairman has picked. And they rotate to help us kind of do the job of a town planner. To look, to look at plans specifically.
Peer review.
Yes, and so we don't mean to be difficult, but I just wanted to share with you, our town planner is not, has not. And we don't have anyone now, so any project like this that has elaborate drainage, landscaping, things of that nature, we ask that it be peer reviewed, just so that.
Make sure we're following the rules.
A licensed professional does verify that we think, we think everything's fine, but we're not licensed professionals.
Sure, understood.
And ordinarily, we would do this, have done this at the start of the process, but that got delayed.
That's something we would do as part of the prior to issuing of a building permit.
That's where we are now as of the last meeting, Mr. Bauer, the chairman.
What we could do.
Do a conditional?
Yes.
Well, we could do it that way, or we could have him inspect. I, I assume you're going to do your, your test wells during construction to see what's underneath. You could have him inspect at that point.
You're talking about geo tests?
Yeah, for your drainage and.
We have done those.
You've done that.
Yes, sir. We have full reports on that. We typically get those prior to starting the design, so we know what kind of soils we're going with.
I did see you had some building boring smacked down there, but.
Yes, sir. Normally, it's twelve. They'll poke twelve holes in the ground, five of which are in the footprint of the building. There's several out of the parking lot, and then there'll be a couple in where the detention facility is supposed to go. So we're, we're firm believers in spending the extra money upfront, making sure we know what we're dealing with and design to the specific lot, because, as I mentioned last week, these are thirty-year deals for us. We don't wanna have to come back up here because something went wrong or the parking lot failed or whatever the case may be. We wanna get all this done upfront, make sure it's right, get it installed, and then we don't have to deal with it anymore after that. So it, it is a very expensive process, but we do it on every one of these before we start. So we have geo checks come out and.
What is your timeframe?
The timeframe, I don't have an opening date for Dollar General. I know that we would certainly like to get some construction started before it gets cold again. Normally, once we put the first shovel in the ground, it's a hundred and twenty days, and the stores open and go. So three months, three and a half months or so is what we need for the construction. The longer that I take doing this part of the process, the less time they have to do their part. So obviously, the sooner we can get a permit, the better it would be for us to get this in, in place, up and running before winter hits us. Do you know any estimated timeframes regarding your peer review? Is that something that typically?
I was looking for the, usually, he's got a quick turnaround. I was trying to just in my head come up with a, a way to expedite things since we're kind of late getting into the peer review.
Who are you gonna be using as part of the peer review?
Excuse me?
What's the name of the individual or company you'll be using?
Charles Rowley.
Would it make sense for us to, in an effort to expedite it, maybe have a sit-down with him? Just hand it off and, you know, that way nothing gets lost in translation, and we can help him understand anything that might be unique.
Walk through the project with him?
He's very local.
If you happen to do that, if you wanna provide us with contact information, we can obviously keep the board in, in the loop on that, but we could just coordinate directly to make that happen.
And he would be doing your, your site inspections during construction. So I think if we maybe combine the two together, we could expedite things for you as, as well as.
Now, that's a fee that I pay, correct?
Right.
Okay. You, any, I guess, is that what this invoice was for? The B item?
No.
Charlie Rowley?
No, that was some, for some other work he did.
Gotcha.
I was looking, he did send an estimate.
A peer review, and I was looking at the bottom.
I assume that's.
He's very efficient and very affordable. He, he doesn't waste any time.
Good, good. Yeah, you know, a lot of times, and I certainly don't mean to say that that's the way it's gonna be here, but a lot of times we have.
They can be abusive.
Well, peer review, they get paid by the hour, and the more they comment, the more money they make.
Mr. Rowley is very detailed, but he's very fair.
Good, good. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Boulder Engineering or not, but they're, they're very, very good. They've, they've been working with us for several years now, and we're very happy with, with the type of work they're doing. It's, we don't like. It's, uh, we don't like to cut corners and we pay them a lot of money, so they do it right and get us everything we need, so we don't have any problems permitting and with the state and the federal ordinances. This looks like a peer review that they, that he did, Smithers and Vincent LLC, fifteen hundred bucks. I mean, that's, that's really not an issue at all for us.
Yeah, the estimate he, uh, put forward for this site is twelve seventy-five.
That's not a problem at all, I can write you a check right now.
Okay, Mr. Crowley, you said?
Rowley.
Rowley.
Rowley, Charles Rowley.
Rowley.
Oh, okay. Do you happen to have his phone or email I could grab?
All right, I'm sure you can.
Get his letterhead.
Okay, great, yeah, I'll grab that and then I'll just keep members of the board in communication as we're figuring it out.
Is it okay for us to contact him directly?
Uh, yeah, I think it would be beneficial, what we need is a, is a.
Some paperwork filled out with the treasurer's office and a, and a, that amount deposited in a fifty-three G account, then he can.
And you need that prior to him starting?
Uh, yeah, that would be great. Um, I wish I had that paperwork here, I could have it filled out.
Is it, is it available on the web or no? Cause we could download it in an email.
It's a W nine, is that a standard tax document? I'm not sure, so just fill one out and get it to us with the check and that would.
W nine.
Good.
And then, uh, he can address. I'm sure he'll, he'll cite the same things you're asking waivers for, if he knows you're asking for the waivers upfront.
Okay.
Save some time.
Sure, sure.
You want to do closet condition, fun.
Just a couple of things that, correct note of plan, showing the fence corrected and Mr. Rowley's peer review.
We'll get that, that fence revised tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, it, it won't take any time at all to get that changed.
We're fine. Any issues? You say it, we believe it.
And, uh, I'll talk to him too, just so.
Yes, please.
You can, we'll try to expedite things, help out on that.
And you say he's local here?
Yeah, yeah. And he's probably, uh, he's familiar with the site, I'm sure.
Great.
Uh.
Entertainer motion?
I would.
Close public hearing?
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. I would say that, um, you don't have a list of, uh, standard conditions.
I do not. I do not. I, I should probably get that, but I won't keep it.
Yeah, I'll see if I can. Copy, how am I going to do this, uh? Yes.
If, if there are any adjustments that come out of the process with the peer review, should we just then issue an updated set of drawings that would encompass all those comments subsequently to that being completed? And that would include, obviously, the adjustments to the fence we're going to make, or would we prefer to see the adjustment, uh, like tomorrow, for example?
No, you, you can, I, I think, panel them all together.
I think you're going to do them all together.
Do it all at one time then?
We don't want to see you spend money to do things.
Okay. Just hoping you would say, but I just want to make sure that, in the form.
And then Charlie understands the process, so.
Okay.
It makes it a lot, a lot easier on everybody.
So we'll get.
Unless, unless you want to come back, you know, another three or four times, you know? Just think all the, uh, frequent flyer miles you get.
It's great if you're all.
I don't think you have an issue with frequent flyer miles.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
I, uh, I traveled forty-six thousand miles last month.
Last month?
Yes, sir. So, I'm, I'm pretty good on my frequent flyer. Uh, this isn't everything, everyday deal for me.
Uh, so I would suggest a notation that, that, no issues with the waivers, right?
No, I think we reviewed those and I think we were all in agreement.
Yeah, so the waivers, we agreed to.
Yes.
Approve the waivers listed. Uh, substantially used a construction permitted, is not commenced within two years, excluding the amount of time required for appeal. Then the approval shall expire. That's kind of a boilerplate one. Uh, developer shall develop a stormwater management plan, which I'm sure is in your report.
Yes, sir. It's in that big stack of paper, yeah.
Yeah. Uh. You'll work with, with the engineer to compile a list of inspections. Uh, all rubbish rubble, metal stumps and other debris will be removed and properly disposed of off-site. Developer will provide a porta potty onsite for construction. No work permitted on Sundays and legal holidays unless specific approval is granted by the zoning enforcement officer. No work prior to seven AM. We usually say site will not be clear cut, but I don't think that's an issue on that particular site.
Don't think there's anything there?
Uh. And then we had just the, uh, individual, uh, uh, a, any, any requests of other boards or commissions would be included. I, I think we already talked to conservation and they weren't an issue.
Yes, sir.
Would we, do we need something from the fire department in reference to your conversation with the fire department in writing? Or is that divine?
I think they did. Is that just a verbal discussion or do you, if you get emails or?
I don't know if we have anything in writing, but I, certainly, we could get something in writing if we don't.
Yes.
I'm sure that they'll submit something anyways, but.
Just for the file, yes.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, what we'd be looking for is letters as, you know, we have no issue with the plan, basically, but, yeah, we can do that.
Correct. Correct. And I, I think Mr. Rowley's going to want, um, updated details on this sign, cause he's going to make that part of the file.
Other, other than this?
Right, this has the wrong dimensions on it.
Yeah, so it's going to be stupid to make it to us.
So, he's going to want that for the, the file to permanently document.
Understood, and he will get, uh, receive a full construction set of documents for the signage separately from us. So that's, that's in the works now and, uh, we've contacted Dollar General and let them know that monument instead of the pole signs, so they've relayed that to their, their sign vendor and, uh, they're working on those drawings now.
And, um, I can tell you one thing, Mr. Rowley is very cognizant of his, um, road safety, so he's going to.
Yes.
He'll want to talk to you about that sign set back and.
Okay, sign distances in bad ways?
He's very concerned about that.
Okay.
We don't have a problem with that at all and, uh, there'll be some temporary, uh, lane closure there, uh, right up against the curb whenever we're installing those drives, so we'll have flaggers out and.
I'm, I'm sure Mass Highway will give you the detail on that.
And we're used to, we're used to that, so it's, that's pretty normal for us, we'll include that as well.
Uh, so, we want to make a motion. Oh, we can't really vote, we need.
No.
Fourth person.
Right.
That's what I was told.
Well, I think it's all hinges on Mr. Rowley's ability to give us some positive feedback and then we could vote then.
Well, did we discuss earlier, maybe I misinterpreted, did we discuss that the, as we worked through with Mr. Rowley on the plans, that we could incorporate his feedback prior to issuing some building permit, but not, that wouldn't uphold necessarily the board's approval of the site plan? Or was I misinterpreting?
I think we want to do like a conditional approval based on his response.
Correct.
Okay.
But he does work very fast.
But we also need the, uh, the fourth member here.
We need the fourth boarding member.
And that's, that's something that can happen without me being here?
Uh, yeah, that could.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, at this point, probably considering that more of a matter of process rather than more discussion, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so that would be June ninth from what I can see, but you wouldn't have to come back for that, you could just.
Okay.
Is that fourth member, I know that it's the, the whole, all in pool and have the ability to go back and review tape or video?
Mm-hmm. In fact, now we have.
Two.
It's recorded.
Well, we have the advantage of a video.
Yes.
It's not just listening to, uh, reading minutes or taking, uh, so we do have the advantage of that now.
So I guess basically the way it's going to work is we'll get ahold of, uh, the engineer for the peer review. We'll sit down and.
You can work on all those details and be ready to roll when we.
Talk through everything, get his comments back, incorporate those into the drawings, resubmit those and then you guys, that hopefully can happen between now and June ninth, you said?
That'll happen between now and June ninth, yeah.
And, uh, then you guys will just, we'll just resubmit the drawings with Mr. Rowley's, I guess, he'll have a letter that.
He'll just give us a letter, if the drawings haven't changed, you don't have to.
Got you, got you. And then at the June ninth meeting, it'll, you guys will just be kind of an administrative approval at that point.
Correct.
Understood, okay.
Because, uh, as far as I can tell, everybody's going to vote me affirmative at this point. And.
Guess we're done.
I guess you're all set. Unfortunately, uh.
Sorry to drag you back again.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay, no problem at all.
Next meeting, they'll be at Tootsie's, we'll go there and stuff.
You know Tootsie's?
Oh, yeah.
You know, they put.
Is, is this still alive?
It is, they, they actually put one in the airport now.
Oh, yeah?
There's live bands at the airport all day long. So, uh, Tootsie's Orchid Lounge.
Mm-hmm.
It's a famous spot.
That was a fun place.
It is, still is, still is. Uh, Jimmy Buffett opened up a, a restaurant down on Broadway and he went to Tootsie's and sang while he was in town. Stopped in, he was pretty excited.
Jimmy Buffett.
Went down there for a dealer meeting and, and we were in there, I think we were, I think we were in Nashville like forty-eight hours and we spent eight of them in, in Tootsie's.
Sounds like the crew I hang out with. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was a, there was a boarded up theater across the street, down the street a little bit on the other side, and a guy sitting in front with a drum and a tin cup, and I said, if they left us here for a week, that's what we'd look like.
Those guys still sit on the corners, playing their guitars and asking for money. How long ago was that?
Oh, well, it was two thousand one, I think.
Uh, that was back, uh, just as downtown, it was coming back alive.
Yeah, they did a great job on the rhyme and that came out beautiful.
Oh, yeah, beautiful place. Well, they've got, uh, you know, they, they just finished a new, um, uh, convention center.
Mm-hmm.
With a new Omni Hotel attached to it. It's, uh, I think it's eight blocks long and four blocks deep. It is enormous, that is huge, huge building, but, uh, changed the skyline. There's several new skyscrapers gone up in the last couple of years, it's, it's almost grown too big for me, I'm going to have to move it here and there. Gentlemen, thanks for the special meeting, I really appreciate you all coming out.
Thank you.
Have a good trip back home.
On your day off.
Take care.
Once you're off. Sure.
Yeah, if, if there are, if there are forms that, you know, you want me to have. Brenda was going to put that together when Alan stepped down, but I never got them and I never followed up with her, so. If there are certain things we should have, I'll make a library.
I had, I had a collection of our blanket conditions for site plan and one for, uh, subdivisions and, and then some of the, some of the specialty, some of the specialty conditions that we applied, like, you know, on lighting and things like that, that we could add in.
Right. Should we close this meeting, so?
Entertain a motion to, uh, Jen?
I would.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, oh, there was one thing. I don't know if you all got copies of that focus group study in the last packet, last meeting?
Yeah.
Did you get copies of that?
I don't know. Focus group on what?
Uh, I think it was billed as a focus group on business and economic development in the town of Wayham.
Oh.
It was very, very critical of the planning board.
I was part of the focus group.
Were you?
I haven't talked to him.
And there was.
I didn't do nothing. I, I just stopped cursing, I don't pick on people.
The issue wasn't the planning board, it was the fact that we don't have a planner, which, to me, rolls back to the town.
Well, that.
The usual.
It, it doesn't read that way.
I know, but that's, the reality is, is.
It reads. We got the heat for the procedures our previous planner was following, you know? Delaying plans, sitting on plans, keeping us in the dark.
Right.
That all landed on our doorstep.
Right, right.
So, uh, and there was a not-too-flattering line about all the appointed boards in town, which never should have been put in print, it makes you wonder why people want to volunteer when you read things like that.
Yeah. The focus group that I was part of, um, I mean, there was a lot of negative things discussed, but not specific to a, a, a board or just in general, the town, you know, we tried to make it positive. Look at the natural resources this town offers and the proximity to highways. This town should be a superstar. But the reality is, is, and I'm a newcomer, so, the people that are here have accepted less than they deserve. And they continue to accept less and they continue to allow people to do things that they shouldn't be doing.
It, it's a haven for carpetbaggers.
If, but if, so if you were in another town, they would not allow small businesses to put out twelve signs in their front yard. Looks like a, you know, looks like the Clampets live there. So, it's all those little things and, and that's what the people on the board that I was part of were saying, like, sadly, we, we can't get anybody to enforce the regulations that should be enforced. And in turn, that stops the cleanup. So there is no cleanup, so it's just a continuation. The other thing is, is, I think they mentioned today, I really think the Dollar General store is a very homely store. I like the fact that a store wants to come here, but
Mm-hmm.
we should have standards. They, they wouldn't build that and hang them. Let me tell you, that's not going to hang them, that's not going in, and, and it doesn't even have to be hanging, but sandwiched, you know, they're not going to allow that stuff.
Well, that's something that came up like sev- on several occasions in my history of planning, but every once in a while, we'll start making positive direction and we'll talk about, we need design standards, we need this, we need that, put in place.
You, but you need them fair, some towns are run way over.
No, I mean, something that's reasonable.
You know?
And, um, and what happens is, is you'll either get a small group come and beat you up on one and it gets pushed into the, into corner and it gets forgotten. Uh, when, when you talk about, you know, twenty signs in, in a business's front yard.
It's absurd, or the signs in this corner.
The twenty-five years I've been involved in the planning board, I mean, we've worked on, uh, signed bylaws and last minute, Flo Byron Company will come in and there's only a small majority, uh, Angus, Clan, the Grouch Brothers. And they'll bombard you, we'll work with you, put on the back burner, we'll come back, we'll work so everybody can live with something that's nice. And you never see them again. So it comes up again and then you get badgered, beat up, and, uh, it's.
I mean, I don't, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, I've been in a lot of communities in my career and life and.
But, but Wayham, Wayham, Wayham is, is, isn't it, where, where it's located geographically, uh, it, it, it become a home of carpetbaggers, it really has.
But it's.
Uh, the last three building booms, the same thing, it's a bedroom town, uh, we get all, uh, the, the overflow and we've had developers that come in that do commercial property and made statements that, hey, uh, we come here because I supply a service of cheap rental, you know, real estate for people to come in to start up and do whatever. And that's the attitude that they have. You know, how do you change that? It, it's tough. EDIC is supposed to be working to help you do that change.
Well, that was, that was the one comment in that focus group study was the town has failed to empower the planning board to insist to have some of these tools.
Right.
You know, I, I mean, you saw that with, with the TDI that we just passed. One of the objections was all the power would be in the planning board and, God help us, we can't do, have that, you know?
Right.
Well, if you don't, if you don't trust the people you put.
Well, if you don't, if you don't trust the people you put here, then.
Right.
I know it's not an elective position, but you're still.
Well, I think, you know, maybe over the years, so many people have not seen what they had hoped to see with different boards. And that was long before my time, but I think the boards that I see now are, all seem to be moving in the right direction.
We, we sat, we used to sit this building in the other corner over there, uh, probably five town administrators ago. We summoned the building department to come in front of us to enforce some of our regulations or some of the rules that we put on here. And the town administrator sat there with a, with a smile on his face, uh, where, where's the building inspector? Never seen him, never come to a meeting, they couldn't care less. He's the enforcement officer. Town administrator sit there like this with a smile on his face and say, hey. That was it. And that was just before the, um, the make piece development started. Uh, you know, that's, I'm talking probably fifteen years ago. But that was, uh, who's the little guy was always in the gym? He was after Joe Murphy.
Oh, Mike Hatton.
Mike Hatton.
So.
Couldn't care, nobody, nobody, nobody is accountable for anything. Uh, we, we did a subdivision, there was, um, it was bank-owned property, it went through many hands. We finally went, we got a seven lot subdivision out of it and there was a lot of parcels that were gonna be offered to the town for whatever, unbuildable. We never seen the documentation that the town didn't want them. Uh, the developer went and flipped them to somebody else they were built on. And still to this day, we still never seen the documentation that the town said, town father said that they didn't want the property cause he had first refusal on it. And, you know, stuff like that goes on all the time.
They, they liked to cite the time it took to get Wayham Crossing going. And they were still working with MEA and National Heritage three or four months after we were done with it.
I think that project is like the shining star of the town.
That's probably the best project we've ever been a part of.
I mean, I think it's, it's nicely.
It was well worth all the time that we put into it.
It's nicely laid out, it's, it's on an eyesore, it flows well.
Well, even now you hear people, well, when, when are you gonna, when will Matt gonna start? Well, right now the turtles are home.
Well, they were down there with the dogs the other day sweeping it.
Yeah, well, we finally get the turtle sweeped.
Sniffing out the tortoises. So, uh, any day now, you're gonna see on a Friday or Thursday afternoon, the machinery will come in. They'll start Monday morning, by Tuesday afternoon you'll see rates of the post office. And it'll be, you know, a normal going thing.
I always gotta kick out of Wayham Crossing, cause every time somebody brought it up, they added a couple of months on the time it took to do it, you know? Oh, planning board was a year on that, that was fourteen months, no, it was sixteen months, it's like.
But, but it was.
That was a big project though.
It was a big project.
The end product, I think was great.
I mean, you gotta pay attention to the details, cause you only wanna do it once.
And it was a big project and it took that long for the public to get comfortable with it.
Right.
You know, every public hearing was packed for that and the people that attended learned a lot about what we have to deal with, what the developer has to deal with. And I think they became comfortable with the developer. We had a qual- quality developer there. And it made them, made the project easier to take. And I think pretty much everybody now is happy with it. I, I haven't heard any, other than getting stopped at the traffic lights, I haven't heard any negatives.
You don't sit there very.
It's, it, you know, we've gone through two Christmases already, George, and the traffic that we foresee, we haven't seen. I mean, it, it's great, it's nothing like the Downers Mall.
I mean, I think, I think it worked out well, but.
Yeah.
The sad part is the other stuff is what the town lets happen. You know, some of the older properties that really should be torn down, cleaned up, something should be done. They're just eyesores and, you know, like I said, I'm, drive down, you know, through our Route twenty-eight and look at the signage. There's no uniformity. They're all, I mean, it's disgustingly.
There's probably four meters landlord's own control most of it.
But it's disgustingly, uh, disheveled.
It's the same people that control it.
It's, you know, it's just, it's sad. It makes me sad because I look at it and I go, it could be so much nicer. But we don't have anybody, the town planner's not helping, the.
Well, I, well, I, I think sentiment has changed a lot in regards to signage and, you know, you don't get the people buying those ninety-nine dollar changeable letter signs.
Look, look how many people now have those flag things though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And banners.
Those aren't approved. Those, I mean, I don't know the sign by law by heart, but I didn't see anywhere where those were acceptable, but.
No, no, they weren't.
But you have some quality local businesses using them all the time now, because no one's saying you can't do that.
The retention gives.
But it's still there, homely.
Well, how about the ones that blow up and they go up and down? Those are bad too.
But I'm just saying, I just, you know, that, I think when I was part of that focus group, I heard a lot of good things come out of a lot of people's mouths, but I can't see how any of those good things are ever gonna come to fruition if this town can't get the quality staffing they need. You know, I mean, the, it's, I, I know it's like a lot of towns, but it seems like it's still like the good old boy syndrome here. Those that have been here for generations benefit, those that haven't, don't. Um, I mean, I don't know, I have a lot of questions, you know? I mean, you brought it up, but like, why are there multiple fire departments? Why are there multiple boards overseeing fire departments? Every town I've ever been in a city, there's a chief, there's a board of selectmen, there's a town administrator. That's it. Why do you need the boards? Why do you need these people? And I'm sure they don't get paid very much, but why do you even need them? That's a question. That, that's not a comment, that's a question. I, I haven't been to any meetings, but I'd like to know, why do you need those people?
As one of those people, we'll have that discussion another night.
Wait until Charlie's here, we can.
What?
When Charlie's here, we can discuss the meeting.
Charlie.
Charlie's, Charlie's from Orange.
Oh, yeah, he, I mean, he said, I sent an email, cause I knew you couldn't get near a computer. I said to Charlie and to John and to you, you know, there's a meeting tonight, cause I didn't think if anyone could get to. And Charlie sent back that he couldn't come, cause he's got the fire district.
Orange District meetings tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't go.
Explain that to me.
Why don't we adjourn the meeting so Bob can go home? There was a motion on the floor and.
I seconded it.
Yeah, I'm all in favor.
Alright.
Okay, Bob, we'll go lift you off the hook.